Okay. We just ran into some issues all of a sudden with the connection here. So anyways, we will go ahead and get started. Welcome to our meeting for Grand Blank Township Board Meeting for Tuesday, July 7th. And at this time, I would like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll ask for approval for the agenda for this evening. Yes, Mr. Massey.
In the past, we have had difficulties, a problem with getting items on the agenda. So I suggest, before we approve the agenda, that I have two items I'd like to get on the agenda for Thursday. The first item is the lawsuit that was filed by the superintendent around June the 12th. And it looks as though that you were involved some kind of way in the lawsuit.
Okay.
The number two item I'd like to put on the agenda is the police contract that have been botched up. We need to have a discussion about that.
Okay. Well, first of all, there is no lawsuit that's been filed against the township. Uh, Mr. Ladd, do you want to weigh in?
No, you're exactly right. There is no lawsuit that's been filed against the township. There's been a complaint regarding a township policy, and a potential violation of a township policy, but no lawsuits have been filed.
Robbie, can you turn the volume up?
Well, let's have a discussion about their complaint.
Well, that certainly is something that, in the purview of the township board, however, we have an attorney at Bodmin handling that complaint and an investigation. And I'm not, I'm not prepared to add anything to that discussion. What I can do though, Mr. Massey, is I can contact that attorney and get you a report for you to review, and the rest of the board for tomorrow. And if there's something that he can add for Thursday's discussion, we can bring that up to him. But let me start with contacting him and getting you some information, and getting a brief report for you to review. And if there's more that needs to be discussed or considered, I guess we can cross that bridge on Thursday.
And the police contract, we can discuss also. We are actually having some discussions tomorrow. And I can report on that on Thursday as well, and where we're at. But we're real close to wrapping up some of that. So we'll be able to report on that on Thursday.
Will we have that item on the agenda for Thursday?
Um, I can put it on the agenda for Thursday.
The lawsuit, however you want to say it.
Well, there's no lawsuit. But we'll have Mr. Ladd contact the labor attorney, and we'll get some kind of a report to the board.
The only thing I'd say, I do not understand the complaint when you knew about the complaint on June the 12th. And we knew absolutely nothing about the complaint.
Right.
Uh, when the superintendent was released. And you failed to tell us, Scott. So we need an open discussion about it.
Sure. We can discuss what that policy is and how we handle personnel complaints. So we can discuss that. Okay? All right, so I'll ask for approval of the agenda for this evening. Ms. Lane?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda for Tuesday, July 7th, as presented.
Okay, is there support? Uh, Mr. Guzak?
Yes, support.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lane, you want to call for the vote?
Uh, what about Thursday's meeting? You want to add that to it, Scott?
No, we'll do that on Thursday.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, need to call, roll call, Ms. Lane.
Uh, Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoor?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And you're saying that, uh, Mr. Trustee Atkins is not on screen or available?
I don't see him anywhere on here, no.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we've got an agenda to go to public comment. And I do have a letter that was forwarded to me that an individual would like me to read. Um, so I'll do that at this time. "My name is Peggy Noldy, 8119 Pagels Drive. I am a new resident in Grand Blank Township. However, I am not new to Grand Blank Township. I retired as Grand Blank Township possessor in 2010 to become the Equalization Director of Genesee County, where I continued to deal with Grand Blank Township on a professional level until my retirement from there in July of 2019. I spent 20 years at Grand Blank Township, and I'm proud of the work I did. I was employed here when the board made the decision to move to a Township Manager Superintendent structure. Grand Blank Township had grown to be the largest taxpaying unit of government within Genesee County, and was continuing to grow rapidly." I'm going to mute some lines here because I'm getting a lot of feedback here. If everyone can mute their line, that'd be great. I don't know if control the mics now. Okay. "I spent 20 years at Grand Blank Township and proud of the work I did. I was employed here when the board made the decision to move to a Township Manager Superintendent structure. Grand Blank Township had grown to be the largest taxpaying unit of government within Genesee County, and was continuing to grow rapidly. The Township Board had the foresight to look to the future to make sure day-to-day business would have consistent leadership even when board members changed. It has taken some time for the township to find the right person to fill this position, but the Township Board did not give up. Having the right person in this position to oversee and handle the day-to-day business of Grand Blank Township is of the utmost importance to not only the taxpayers and residents of Grand Blank Township, but to the staff as well. Many of the workers at Grand Blank Township today are employees I had the pleasure of working with during my tenure there. They are dedicated employees and deserve having a superior who understands the importance of their positions and responsibilities. I have dealt with Mr. Limata on a professional level since he arrived at Grand Blank Township, and was pleased to see Grand Blank Township finally had a professional at the helm who is actively engaged in finding new ways of growing business for a great township. I was representative for Genesee County and sat on the board of the Next Michigan Development Corporation, I-69 corridor, of which Mr. Limata attended those meetings also. I was able to learn more about his efforts at Grand Blank Township to encourage development. He had a great vision for this township and was instrumental in establishing the DDA, which is comprised of outstanding individuals and speaks volume about his leadership abilities to be able to attract such talent as Win Cooper and Jim Tubbs, among the others, who sit on this board. We have all faced very hard economic times, and being able to make tough decisions in the best interest of saving Grand Blank Township taxpayer dollars, all while providing same service, is not an easy task, but Mr. Limata managed to do just that. Couple of years ago, the retirees' healthcare had to change in order to save Grand Blank Township money. As a retiree, I was concerned and attended one of the meetings Mr. Limata personally conducted to explain the need for the change and the cost savings to the township, while assuring us the new insurance program was an upgrade to the current plan, and he was correct. My husband and I are 100% satisfied with this plan, and we both were impressed that he took the time, had representatives in attendance, and made sure questions were addressed. No governmental unit is made of money, and having someone diligently seeking ways to save money is necessary. Having a leader who accepts the challenge to make these tough decisions for the betterment of the community, while at times may not be popular decisions, is what Grand Blank Township taxpayers and residents deserve. And Mr. Limata, in my opinion, has done just that. As I have always told employees throughout the years, it is never about you or me, but about what is doing what is right for this local unit of government. And as long as we keep this focus and do what is right, they may not like us, but we can hold our heads high, knowing we have done our job well. Mr. Limata, thank you for doing your job well." Okay, Robbie, is there anybody online that would like to make public comment? Okay. Okay. I'll open up the phone lines and see if anybody wants to make public comment. Anybody care to make public comment? Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Let's do this, I'm going to mute, uh... Okay. Okay. Robbie, continue, give me a hand. Are you controlling the mics or my... Okay. Speaker number two, caller and user number two wants to...
Hello?
Okay. Go ahead and identify your name and address, and go ahead if you'd like to make public comment.
Okay, this is Ed Erk, 7212 Porter Road. Can you help me a while?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I don't know how many people we have on the audience. I've made just about every meeting there is for the last three and a half years. In fact, I've spoken at 64 of them. So it's kind of different not being at the podium, knowing how many people out here in the audience. But anyhow, I just did that for, you know, the audience. I do make meetings, I am involved and understand. So I just want to bring up the topic you have on your Thursday's agenda in regards to management. I just want to say, this township is 187 years old. In the last 10, 12 years, we've had three or, two or three superintendents, interim managers, et cetera. We're trying this thing. It's new to the township. This township has operated with a supervisor for 175 years. So what I'm doing is, I'm going to sit back and see how this plays out, and what it looks like in the big picture. Because we are just in a moment in time of 187 years. I do want to say that we do have directors in every department, okay? And I hear a lot of people talking about planning and developing and that. We actually do it. We haven't had a planner for many years. We do have a full-time planner that can take care of those situations. We actually have a planning commission to take care of planning in this township. So, and we do have the Township Board, there's certain people there with a lot of talent and knowledge. And we have a lot of department heads that know what they're doing. So I'm going to sit back and see what happens, and thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Robbie, anybody else? Uh, Larry Anderson?
Hello, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, Larry Anderson, 6545 King Point Road, Grand Blank Township. Uh, I just wanted to bring up the meeting on the first... I'm rather disappointed in our board. I find it kind of sad that five of the elected seven members of this township board could not attend that meeting. Not one or two that happened, but five of our seven elected people could not make that meeting. Uh, I find that what's disappointing. You run for this office, you take up this job, there's going to be time you have to put into it, there's going to be work that needs to be done. And you can't just ignore, then go out later on all of your media posts and explain why you weren't there. Totally inappropriate, in my opinion. You guys abruptly and quickly added an open motion, bid agenda, to let Limata go, and then none of you showed up to the meeting to discuss how to move forward with vacating that position. So a little disappointing, and I think a little more, uh, planning and should have gone into that. You guys should have been there to face the public and answer questions. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Robbie? I have a few more.
Mr. Chair?
We have a couple more public comments here for Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chair, okay.
Okay, Maria Hobson?
Hi, good morning, or good evening, I should say, I'm sorry. Um, my name is Maria Hobson. I live at 8389 Parkside Drive in Grand Blank. And as I said last week, I have been a resident, a member of this community for 50-plus years. I grew up in the Tanglewood neighborhood, and now I live on Parkside Drive in Woodfield Farms. And Grand Blank is my home. I've been here my whole life, I planned on staying here my whole life. I've been through a lot here, the ups and downs and all that. And I'm kind of unpleasantly surprised at the way that this board has conducted themselves over the last several months. I really don't have time to get involved with all the things that you guys do. However, I do respect what you do. Um, and then I was kind of floored last year when they snuck in the $4,000 bonus. And watching the meeting, you could really tell that people were 100% blindsided. And I just think that it just is uncalled for. I mean, when you're dealing with taxpayers' dollars, ratepayers' dollars, wherever the money is coming from, that was uncalled for. And as I said last week, I feel you probably deserve a raise. You do not deserve a bonus slid in in the back door. If you would have done it correctly, it would have been much more transparent, and probably we wouldn't have these trust issues right now. Um, I had a lot of things that I wanted to say, but following Peggy Noldy, it's a pretty difficult task because she, nobody can say it better than her. She knows exactly what's going on, and I agree 100% with what Mrs. Noldy says. But I just, I'm still concerned about, I feel that this board does not have a problem with putting behind everybody's back. And I feel right now that there is absolutely nothing that the other three board members can do that the four trustees are going to agree with. I feel that this township has been hijacked by four trustees, three of them, in my opinion. And these are only my opinions. I'm speaking for myself, and I try to fact-check as much as I can. I don't want to say anything that's not factual. Three of you, to me, in my opinion, you've gone rogue. You are so off the deep end, and so into whatever is right for you. The fourth, obviously, and I'm not going to name names, is calm and professional, yet I feel that only does things that benefit his own position in life, in his own position of what he wants. Um, it's a crying shame. It's a crying shame, and Mr. Limata did so much work to provide foundation for growth, for Tech Village, and for everything else. And if these board members honestly feel that anybody that was ever interested in coming into Tech Village were to look at that meeting of the abrupt firing, nine and a half minutes it took you to fire somebody, without any advance notification to the people that you serve. Why would a developer, a builder, why would anybody come here and trust this board? That's what I'm fearful of. So, at the last meeting, I also asked that you pass a resolution in order to prevent the board from adding last-minute items. And the very first thing that happened today was, somebody wanted to add another agenda item. All I can say is that these four trustees, they just don't belong together. You are too cohesive in what you want and not caring what anybody else wants. That's my opinion, of course. So apparently you have some kind of a pact, and that's all that's going to happen. Um, you know, I hope that this can end, and I hope that anybody that wants to see the progress of how this has happened, go back to the December 19, or December 2019 meetings. And you'll see there, and you can see, week after week after week, how combative and argumentative that this board has become towards, um, you know, supervisor, even maybe even towards the treasurer. And I'm not talking about the supervisor and the treasurer, or the clerk, that they, I feel that they've all done a great job. Extremely disappointed that Mrs. Lane voted to terminate Mr. Limata's contract. Extremely disappointed. But thank you for not voting for the $4,000. Anyways, you guys need to be reeled back in. You need to start working for the people. We're the people. So please, take the time out of your day and think about what everybody else wants. I've heard nobody say anything bad about Mr. Limata. So we still want explanation of why he's gone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hobson. Um, I'm asking that anybody who's on for public comment, if you can use the chat feature to let us know if you wanted to speak, if we've not included you. Um, I do have a letter that was presented to us before the last meeting, but the individual asked that I read it at the meeting because they want it part of this meeting that the board members are at. "Dear Mr. Bennett, due to a family emergency, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting. However, I'd like my comments read. I'm profoundly disappointed in the Township Board for a series of actions that undermine this institution. Shame on the board for firing Dennis Limata, a true public servant who has demonstrated his commitment to our community. Shame on the Township Board members who, late last year, voted themselves a Christmas bonus of $4,000 so one of the trustees could buy his family presents. Shame on the Township trustee who, in violation of the law, engaged in unfair labor practice by attempting to negotiate with the Police Officers Union. Shame on the Township trustee who dressed up in the quote 'uniform' of the right-wing extremist group, Boogaloo Boys, removed the license plate from his vehicle and drove to the civil rights rally, was stopped by the police in Grand Blank Township, and had the nerve to identify himself as a special police officer and a member of the Grand Blank Township Board. I'm calling on those members who fired, who voted to fire Mr. Limata and lining their pockets with bonus money to immediately resign their positions. Jude Raridan, 5376 Old Shawboro Road, Grand Blank, Michigan." I don't see any other comments in terms of, in the chat. Robbie, do you see anybody? Okay, so seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close public comment and bring it to the board. We have on the agenda for Thursday, the approval of the minutes, which we will take advantage of. Um, if you can unmute Mr. Massey for just a moment. Mr. Massey? Oh, you're not unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is that regarding something on the agenda that we've already covered, or...
No, no, when I raised my hand, someone, someone said something that was incorrect. I would like to clarify. And that was, and you have the record and email, the meeting on July the 1st, at the park, you received an email from each one of the trustees of board members that did not attend, and the reason for not attending. So you should put that list out there and stop everyone from saying that we did not notify you. We notified you.
I never said that, I unmuted. I never said that I was never notified of the reasons. It isn't my job to give excuses why board members are not at a special meeting. First item on the agenda for Thursday will be, on the consent agenda, will be the approval of the treasurer's financial activity of $863,761.56. I guess if anybody has any questions on that, they should probably email Mr. Guzak on that report from the treasurer's financial activity. Under operational issues, um, which I had on the agenda for the last, the special meeting, was to talk about township management and the absence of a township superintendent, I'd like to, uh, give my take on it. But Grand Blank Township has a multitude of great things happening. However, the firing of our superintendent two weeks ago was horrific. I was blindsided and am deeply disturbed by the motion, the decision of the board, and what appears to be a very flagrant violation of the Open Meetings Act. Mr. Limata brought a level of professionalism to the township operations that we have not seen before. Unfortunately, this professionalism brought the wrath of those board members that wanted a hand in running day-to-day operations. Because of the manner in which Mr. Limata was terminated, it appears as though a plan was already in place. For the record, if it is the intention of the board to usurp my authority and responsibilities as township supervisor, I will be prepared to go to whatever means necessary to preserve that authority. State statute dictates that day-to-day operations in a charter township are the responsibility and authority of the supervisor. Over the past several weeks, with the firing of Mr. Limata, I have been managing the township business on a day-to-day basis. It is my intention to continue to oversee the operation until the board hires a full-time superintendent. To assist me with this effort, I am exercising my authority to appoint a deputy supervisor. I have asked Grand Blank Township Police Chief Ron Wiles to serve as my deputy supervisor. A deputy supervisor is absolutely essential to ensure the smooth day-to-day operations of the township, and also guarantees our residents continue to get a high level of service. I do not need the board's approval to appoint a deputy supervisor. The deputy supervisor can perform all the duties of the supervisor, with the exception of calling for a special board meeting and voting at a board meeting. In the past two weeks, we have conducted two staff meetings, and I believe that between the exceptional department heads, my deputy supervisor, staff, and myself, we will keep our township headed in the right direction. While we may not be in a position to initiate new projects, we can certainly make sure we continue the level of operations our community has come to expect. In prior years, when the superintendent position was vacant, such as when Mickey Hoffman was supervisor, the compensation was adjusted to reflect the additional hours and workload. In the prior vacancies six years ago, approximately, the salary for the superintendent, I believe, was $80,000, and was prorated to the supervisor position. In this case, I am asking that the board consider several changes. One, compensate Chief Wiles and myself with additional responsibility, prorating and splitting in amount equal to the pay of the superintendent prior to Mr. Limata, which was $80,000. Number two, in light of the tumultuous times among the employment agreement for Chief Wiles to provide additional severance pay. Number three, agree that when a replacement for the superintendent is hired, Chief Wiles will continue in his capacity as police chief. The state statute is clear that the supervisor has the authority to appoint a deputy supervisor. The deputy supervisor reports to the supervisor. The board only sets the compensation for the deputy supervisor. Given the current political climate with our township board, I do not want to place any of our department heads or staff in the crosshairs. Chief Wiles assisting me with day-to-day operations, along with the department heads, will allow for us to maintain township services and to deal with any emergencies that may arise. It is my hope that despite the rash action that was taken two weeks ago to terminate a stellar superintendent, this board will start a thoughtful process for conducting a nationwide search. Since the current board has less than four months left in their term, I would hope that we could start the search process and allow the next board to ultimately make the decision of who they would like to hire and have as their chief executive. Chief Wiles, the department heads, our staff, and myself are prepared to operate the township for as long as it takes. So, in considering the item for Thursday, the board will discuss township management in the absence of a township superintendent. Anybody have any thoughts or want to discuss that issue? I see Mr. Massey has his hand up. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair, the way you stated that the board does not have a say in it, the only thing the board has a say in is the conversation.
Correct. Mr. Mansoor has his hand.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Bennett. So when it comes to the management and the absence of a township superintendent, there are two items that I think belong under this topic that I would like the board to consider. First is, um, is taking a look at the pros and cons and seeing if the superintendent position is still the right structure for this township. And then the second item is for us to consider sponsoring an audit of the books, of the contracts, to make sure that we're getting the right value for our contracts, for our residents' dollars, and also provide a good footing for whoever the next management person is that would step into the role. Thank you.
Ms. Lane has her hand up. Ms. Lane?
All right, I appreciate what you brought forward tonight, Mr. Supervisor, and I would ask Mr. Mansoor, I don't understand his second point that he was making so that, for future discussion. But I do agree with the fact that the nationwide search and your authority to choose a supervisor, so may I ask another question? Mr. Limata was including, had started to include Mr. Guzak and myself as department heads in the staff meeting. Will you consider that as well?
Yes. Yes, I would.
All right, so the only thing I have is, is a question of clarification for Mr. Mansoor about what he was speaking about.
In terms of the audit? In terms of the audit?
Yes. The auditing of the contracts, I, I don't understand what that means.
Thank you. So, so my, my point here is, is that you'd like to make sure that, that we have a, you know, a good firm starting position, that new management knows where they stand with the status of our contracts. So I'd like to ask that we sponsor an, an audit of those to make sure that, you know, every contract, and I'm just gonna use a number of over $40,000, has a, has a pair of eyes on it, just to make sure that we understand what the contract's about, how it was, how it was issued, and then in those big contracts, some kind of a judgment on if the contract is fair value for what we're paying. We're getting fair value for what we're paying. Thank you.
Mr. Guzak has his hand up.
Uh, yes. I agree that we have to go out for a search and I think we, you know, we can pull out the old job description, 'cause everything's in there, it doesn't have any names in it, and we can send it to publish it and all the things that we published the last time when we hired Mr. Limata. We can also look for this person that advised us to see if he's still in business, and we can start that process immediately because we have all those things. We have the original documents and I think we should start on immediately because it does take time to, to get that result.
Mr. Thomas has his hand up.
One thing that I'd like to see is that we look at the position as a whole. There's a lot, I'd like to look at a township manager instead of a superintendent, and I'd also like to look at township supervisor being the superintendent.
Okay. One thing with regard to nationwide search that I've been doing some research, and there, there's, I believe, three organizations that, in the past, that we, I believe we sent out RFQs for. What I would propose is that we establish a committee from this board and that we, I believe, you know, I can get you the names for Thursday of the three organizations that I'm aware of that do national searches for a person in this position. One of them is the Michigan Municipal League, and there's two others that escape my mind right now. But we can put out, the committee can look at the job description, we can look at what, we probably have the RFQ that we used the last time, and we can make whatever changes we want to that. And I know that Mr. Mansour and Mr. Thomas have suggested we look at the, you know, the structure of whether or not a superintendent position is needed. Uh, Mr. Laddie, what, if you can tell me, the board voted a few years ago, is it to put that position in place, but it's up to the board to decide how that, that works, right?
Yeah, what, what happened, I'm trying to remember, I think it was in 2008, the board went from a full-time supervisor to a part-time supervisor and created the position of a township superintendent, and a lot of the, a lot of the responsibilities you'll see in the township superintendent's contract came right out of that resolution that was adopted by the board in 2008. So, if you want to explore, again, that resolution's still on the books, but you're free to explore obviously any sort of management scheme that you feel is appropriate. But currently, you've got that, the resolution in place, we've got the framework from the contracts, and I guess, I guess, you know, the timing of it would be a question. In other words, if you want to, if you want to begin to figure out, if you want to start a search and spend some money, or if you want to decide to analyze the management structure first, I mean, that would be up to you. The fellow that, that Mr. Guzak was speaking of was Terry McGinn, he was a professor at, at Michigan, and I don't know if he's still, my impression was that he's still not-
Right.
-uh, providing those services. And so, I don't think he'll be available to you if you decide to go.
I am aware of three organizations, oh, MML being one of them, but I can get those names and information to the board. Uh, Ms. Lane had her hand up, and then Mr. Thomas.
Uh, to correct Mr. Laddie, I believe that that was done in 2017, that they started, that they went out and searched for the first superintendent, Mr. Laddie, with work back in history.
What year are you saying, Kathy?
I don't think it was 17.
No, it was much earlier than that. I can pull up, I, I actually have seen the minutes from that.
Not 17, 2007 maybe?
That might be.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, because I wasn't here during either selection.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
I, I just wanted to add that I have no qualms at all about the extra pay, the extra responsibility for the supervisor and the deputy superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Laddie?
He would be, Chief Wiles would serve as a deputy, deputy supervisor.
Correct. Well, it sounds like, maybe we can have more discussion on Thursday. Mr. Massey and then Mr. Mansour.
I have a question for the chair.
For me?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is it, is it spelled out in the Michigan Township Association procedure that a supervisor in the absence of a manager or superintendent, that his pay should be elevated?
It doesn't speak to pay at all in the MTA, uh, that state statute basically that the MTA cites in their manual, but pay doesn't come into that. That's something totally up to the township to determine. Okay, yeah. Al, Mr. Mansour?
So, um, yes, thank you. Regarding the responsibilities of the deputy superintendent, I just, when we have the discussion, I think we just need to be clear that we would expect Chief Wiles to continue basically leading the police department-
Yes.
-in addition to that, accept additional responsibilities. Is that where we're headed?
Yes. Actually, I have a handout that I will email to the board members from MTA that explains the deputy supervisor position, but there is actually the ability to handle both roles. And yes, you are absolutely right, Mr. Mansour.
Okay, well, we would have to just be careful that we don't cross any boundaries there in terms of the delegation of duties. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Mansur, or Mr. Massey?
One chair, excuse me, one question to you, Mr. Chair. Has this ever been done before in the township?
In terms of the supervisor taking over from the superintendent?
In terms of-
Appointing a deputy?
-your responsibility to the police chief and running the township.
I am not aware of, but in my tenure, of anybody having a deputy supervisor. However, talking to the MTA, it is something that happens in other townships.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not, you took it a different direction. I'm not referring to a deputy supervisor.
Okay.
I'm referring to a police chief being a deputy supervisor.
Yes.
That's what I'm referring to.
Sure. Well, I don't know that that's happened here in the township. However, the document that I will distribute to the board will clearly show that one of the options is, and it makes sense to have somebody who's already here and familiar with the operations to have a dual capacity, and that is outlined in the MTA article and magazine as well as handouts that they provided me. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair, I have to say this. The climate that we're in, and you know I like Chief Wiles very much. This is what I would like to see because of the climate we in, is that if we go and consider Chief Wiles for a position, as whatever temporarily and whenever he wanted to use, that will only, that will solely, only solely be his responsibility, not running the police department.
Yeah.
Because the climate that we in, we're in a very tense climate now. It's, so when you start doing that and something flares up, I mean, I'm looking down the road. I have nothing against the chief, okay? Something happens in the police department, now you got the chief tied to the township. So what do you do? How you separate the two? So that's a very, that's a very unique situation and that, and I just advise the board, please think about it based on the climate that we're in right now. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Massey.
I don't have any grasp that he becoming the manager or superintendent, but I'm very much concerned that he's going to remain over the police department. I'm definitely-
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Massey. Mr. Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Supervisor, to you, it's Attorney Laddie. Attorney Laddie, what are our pitfalls with Chief Wiles, who does a great job with the police unit contract?
Well, Chief, Chief Wiles isn't, I, I would suggest very, very strongly that Chief, Chief Wiles not be our bargaining agent for those contracts. It could be, it could be Supervisor Bennett, you could have Aaron Graves serve as the, as the bargaining agent or a combination of the two, but no, for, for just common sense reasons, you have a good point. We wouldn't ask Chief Wiles to participate in that.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, those negotiations have involved Aaron Graves, our, our labor attorney, Colleen Nizwicki, our, our HR specialist, and myself, and we can leave Chief Wiles out of that. He has been a part of it, but we can have him not be part of that. Okay? Uh, Mr. Massey?
That's the part that you're touching on that I alluded to.
Okay.
So if he remains the police chief, he still have what I call indirect political power just by being the police chief.
Yeah.
That's, that's-
Okay.
That's, that's real. That's not something I'm making up, okay?
All right.
Just an attorney.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Massey. Okay, if anybody have anything new to add to that discussion, otherwise we will pick it up on Thursday and we can make some decisions, but I will provide to the board some information with regard to the search entities that I'm aware of, and also information with regard to deputy supervisor from the MTA and some of that information. And I guess, you know, we can continue to explore whether or not the, the deputy, or I mean, if the superintendent position is needed, but I think at the same time, we need to go down the path of planning to replace the superintendent this time. We can always decide at a later time to not replace him, but I think we need to do both at the same time. And with regard to a committee, I will ask three of you to, well, probably two of you, so we don't, unless there's three that want to be on it, but I'll ask two of you to serve on that so that we don't necessarily have to have a public meeting, but maybe we do want to have it public, I don't know. But we'll form a committee at the next meeting and we'll start working on, on going down that route if that's where the board chooses that they want to go. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have no complaints about your plan and idea.
Okay.
Let me throw a muck and wrench into the game, okay? That I think would be appropriate, appropriate, is that if we made the chief the interim manager or interim superintendent, and he no longer would be the police chief, but as we do the search, and if he decides he wants to stay on, you know, become part of of, 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 of being a manager or superintendent, which I think he would make either or a great leader, okay? But I think we should consider that option now.
Well, we will have him on the, at the meeting on Thursday. However, I can tell you, he does not want to be in the crosshairs and become a political football. Okay, go ahead and mute. That, I, I've had that discussion with him and by having him as a deputy supervisor, he will report to me and he can continue his job as police chief. He does not, if he has to stop being police chief, then he is not going to do this. So, but my appointment stands as him for deputy supervisor, so we can see on Thursday what the compensation level that the board chooses, and we can go from there. Let's move on to the next item, which is the board will consider a resolution to keep Supervisor Bennett as an authorized signer for the CDBG program and remove Mr. Limata as an authorized signer. Uh, for the public, and maybe even a reminder for some board members, the CDBG are federal grant monies that come through the county. We have to have an individual that signs for these and is willing to be liable. I have been the signer on this along with Mr. Limata, however, I can tell you that the majority of the documents I sign with regard to the CDBG funds. So, I don't know if anybody has a question on that, but Ms. Lane?
Not a question, Mr. Supervisor, but again, to have an alternate, may I suggest that we consider appointing Mr. Guzak as an alternate signature in the, in the event you're not here or whatever, because there are times when it may require two signatures or one, and I think that Mr. Guzak would be a very worthwhile contribution as a backup.
I have no issue with that. Mr. Thomas?
I think it should, it definitely should be your deputy superintendent. You've seen that he's going to be the one running the day-to-day operations hand-in-hand with you. It should be the deputy.
Well, he can sign, I'm not sure how that would work, but he is able to do everything that I can except for calling a meeting and voting, so I don't have a problem either way. So, we can think about it. Mr. Guzak?
I think if he, I think if he's your deputy, what, I think what we need is a backup because we want to make sure if you can't make it, somebody else can do it. And so if he's your backup, then I agree, he should be here, but he should be able to sign, because he's doing everything else, so it only makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Guzak. Mr. Massey?
Uh, expounding on what Clerk Lane said, and I agree with Clerk Lane for one simple reason. What, what do we do in the meantime? We don't know how long it's going to take for chief to, for us to come to an agreement on the chief, his, his package or whatever. So in the meantime, we need somebody like Mr. Guzak.
Well, actually, I, as of tonight, I, I'm appointing him as my deputy, so it's happened. It's just that we haven't set the compensation for him. So we can take a vote on Thursday on that. It sounds like you need some thought on that issue. Item C, the board will consider a resolution to authorize a change in the standard lighting contract with Consumers Energy Company, which would allow them to upgrade the street lights at the intersection of Saginaw and McCandless from mercury vapor lights to LED lights. Uh, we've done this in a number of places throughout the township. The quality of the light is much better, superior to the mercury vapor, and actually is a cost savings overall to the township. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions or issues with it, but it's, it's been pretty much standard operating procedure for these types of situations. Okay, next item on the agenda, the board will consider a motion to approve the listing and set a listing price for the Spartan Heavy Rescue Vehicle on Brindo Mountain Fire Apparatus LLC. The appraised value of the vehicle from the fire dissolution is $48,000. Anybody have any comments? I, I'm, I believe I spoke with the, the fire chief about this and he doesn't believe that, you know, I don't think that we're going to get the $48,000, but we'll see. Mr. Laddie, any comment? I know you've looked at this, but-
Well, we, and we had a little bit, we had a discussion about this not too long ago. I, that $48,000 was the price again that the firm that appraised all of our personal property vehicles came up with. Uh, the, the cost, the discussion between the township and the city, city thought it was, were they approximately double that?
Are you really let Patrick?
They didn't understand, uh, what actually that truck had, didn't happen. And so I think if you start out, um, in the neighborhood of that appraised value, I think you'll be, I mean, you've got a good basis for it, right? I mean, a professional third-party appraisal says it was worth in the neighborhood of forty-eight thousand dollars. It seemed to me you'd start around then, unless there's some mistake in the equipment. So you've said something about whether you can get that or not. Uh, Mr. Guzak shared that a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Mans, Massey, and then Mr. Mansour?
Thank you. I have a comment. Based on my experience, uh, working with, uh, the chief on, uh, selling vehicles and fire equipment, uh, uh, I think we should give the chief some latitude. Because in many cases, what we had in mind, someone, uh, came in. Let me give you an example. Say we had forty-eight thousand, okay? As listed. And someone comes in at forty-five thousand, what do we do? And that's the highest bidder.
Well, let's, let's, uh, have the chief on, on Thursday and, uh, get his take on it. Um, and we can see what, what his thoughts are and maybe figure out some latitude of what, uh, our, our lowest that we're willing to go. So, okay. Uh, Mr. Mansour, do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, on this topic, actually, I was, um, going to, uh, see if we, uh, might be able to move this to the consent agenda. I mean, we've talked about this truck, uh, a number of times over the last few months, uh, as we've done the dissolution with the city. So I don't know if there's much to be talked about in this, in more. But, um, I, I think it would be, um, um, probably not appropriate for us to, uh, outline in a, a motion or resolution kind of a, a bottom line here because that would simply
Right.
Then we'd pre-negotiate the thing for us, right? So, um, anyway, so I'm just, uh, consider if we could just move this to the consent agenda. I, I don't know if the rest of the board feels that.
I would agree. Mr. Laddie?
I'll make a suggestion. How about if you move that to the consent agenda and then give, I don't know if it'd be too much of a tale to say, we're going to give the, the chief the discretion plus or minus ten percent of the appraised value price. It's the chief's discretion. He can say, uh, um, you know, I'm taking X number of dollars and not Y number of dollars. I don't, I think that, that way he's got a little latitude. He's not blocking forty-eight. And if he choose, if he comes back to us and said, hey, I, I got a couple of offers at forty-seven thousand dollars, didn't accept, then that could happen too.
Right. That's what I was talking in terms of giving him some latitude. But, uh, Ms. Lane?
I, I would, uh, ask this of Mr. Laddie. I, he can, the fire chief can oversee the negotiations, but I still think an actual sale of a township asset still has to come back to the board for final approval.
Well, you would, but he would, he would come back with a purchase agreement, a proposed purchase agreement.
Correct. Okay. Just so the board understood.
You'll get another look at it.
Yeah.
Sure. A thumbs up or thumbs down.
So, uh, do we have a consensus that will move this to the consent agenda? And we will give, we can give the, uh, fire chief, uh, maybe ten percent latitude either way? Is there?
Yes.
Is there anybody who objects to that?
Yeah.
Mr. Guzak?
Yeah, I don't think we should have on the, in the minutes that it's ten percent, just like, uh, Mr. Mansour was saying that, uh, then you're, you're giving your hand away. So I think it's just, we'll just consider it and, uh, not put it in writing.
Well, Mr. Laddie?
Mr. Guzak, that doesn't mean that he would accept anything in that range. The chief would have discretion to enter into a purchase agreement for a price that he felt is reasonable. Okay? So he might not bring you something. It doesn't, if you started out and you, and you saw these minutes, you put on that truck and you came in at forty-three thousand dollars, doesn't mean you, you got the truck. Chief may say, I'm not selling this thing for less than forty-seven five or forty, forty-seven nine. So I think it just gives him a little bit of wiggle room, but if you gotta give a discretion to bring a purchase agreement to you and then you decide.
Well, it's gonna come.
He can bring any purchase agreement that he wants to. We can always decide. But I just don't want anybody to know in writing that, oh, we've allowed him this or that. Well, just leave it to his discretion to bring whatever the best purchase agreement he can get. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Massey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've worked with the chief over the years. Chief is very, very knowledgeable of the equipment and the prices. And, uh, we, we, we need not to worry about him getting the best deal that he can get. I have faith in it.
Well, let's, uh, do this. Let's, uh, move this item to the consent agenda. And, uh, we'll get some comment from, uh, we'll leave it as is. And, uh, we'll, we'll let the chief, uh, see what he can get. Okay, um, I believe we have, uh, Patrick Lenahan, our parks director, uh, ready to join us in the meeting. Uh, but, uh, item E, the board will consider a motion for approval to move forward with a five-year recreation master plan. Um, let's bring, and there, in your packet is information with regard to that.
Uh, good evening. Uh, in the packet, um, I did solicit three, uh, companies, Row, OHM, and Wade Trim. Uh, all, uh, companies that have a basis here in, uh, Genesee County. Row is actually the, um, professional services provider for, uh, Grand Blank Township, and they did come in at the lowest end.
Mr. Lenahan? Can you, can you do me a favor, do us a favor and just kind of explain what the master plan is and why it's needed for the public and the board?
Sure, sure. Um, so the master plan, uh, it's a five-year recreation master plan. Uh, it is required by, uh, the Michigan DNR uh, in order to accept certain, uh, types of grant funding from the, uh, from the DNR. Um, so, uh, every five years, you have to do a new plan or update a plan. Um, this year it's going to be a little bit different, uh, because of, uh, how the, uh, department is structured. Um, so, uh, there'll be a little bit more changes to it than, uh, in the past. So, uh, there are going to be, um, a couple of different pieces of the plan. Uh, there's going to be the current goals, objectives, administrative structure, um, uh, that's the, that's the main part of the document. Also, as part of the process, we do have to go through and get, um, uh, public comment and survey. Um, so the, um, the people in the Grand Blank School District area here that comprise, uh, Grand Blank Parks Recreation will have opportunities to, um, to make comments, uh, about, you know, what it is, uh, that they want to see, um, you know, their facilities, their programming, um, you know, and just in general, um, you know, uh, what they're looking for in recreation. Uh, it's something that, you know, we'll work with, uh, Row on coming up with the questions. Um, uh, and then that right there is, uh, helps the steering process going forward as far as, um, you know, getting some of those grants and that. So, um, you know, one of the things that we look at here is, uh, in the document, um, you know, that, that kind of lays the roadmap, uh, to, uh, to, to what we're looking for and how we're going to get funded from the DNR in the future.
Okay. Have we been able to get DNR funds in the past?
Um, yes, uh, right now we're working through, uh, an issue with the DNR that, um, you know, I hope to, you know, that will, I have resolved here shortly. Uh, but, uh, there are three different grants that we can get. Uh, we can get land-water conservation trust fund grant, or land-water conservation funds. We can get trust fund grants and recreation passport grants.
Okay. So everybody has the, uh, the package there that Patrick put in the packet. Uh, Mr. Mansour?
Yeah, just, uh, would, Mr. Supervisor, could we, uh, and I did see the, the memo that was included in the packet, but, uh, would it be, uh, possible for us to get a look at the request for proposal that, uh, Mr. Lenahan, um, submitted to the three companies, please?
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We can provide that, I believe, Mr. Laddie, right? Okay, so we'll provide that. Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Right now, aren't we in the third year of a five-year master plan?
Uh, no, the current plan expires in two thousand twenty-one.
The current plan expires in twenty twenty-one. Also, with, with us taking over Parks and Recreation, there's probably going to be a number of changes to that plan, right, Mr. Lenahan?
Yes.
And I know Mr. Lenahan's working on a few, uh, a few things that would help us, uh, enhance us to, uh, receive grant money that, uh, we haven't been able to receive in the past because of a few things that need to be changed. So the whole thing is meant to try and help us, uh, I believe anyways, to help us to focus our energies and also to focus, uh, getting some, some grant dollars coming our way. So, Ms. Lane?
Uh, through you, Mr. Supervisor, to Mr. Lenahan. In this master plan, will we be including the Perry House and other, any other historic areas that we want to look into in addition to, uh, bicentennial park and programming and?
Yes, yeah. So we will be looking at, um, uh, the, the recreational inventory for the whole community. Um, so, um, with that, you know, we'll be looking at, uh, public, private, uh, school district facilities, all, all the different recreation facilities that are out there. Um, you know, we're also looking at, um, some property that the Department of Public Works has, uh, and, uh, you know, how we might be able to incorporate that, uh, in as, uh, uh, park and recreation land.
Uh, and also, you know, one of the things that's going to change is that, uh, the school district has, uh, uh, several new facilities that will begin construction actually, uh, next spring. One of them is a, an aquatics center that will be freestanding, which may allow the Parks and Rec to, uh, uh, expand the, the offerings with regard to aquatics activities, um, as well as some of the, uh, the fields that, uh, will be constructed. But they will be starting, uh, in the spring on, on several of those facilities, which would, you know, be completed by the, you know, with this plan in mind. You know, we might keep those things in mind. Okay, so we will have further discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Off the subject, but seeing that we have to direct you here, I just want to congratulate you. Uh, the park looks awesome. Awesome. I was up there a couple of weeks ago. Last week I was quite ill, so that's here now, there, but it looks really, really nice. Congratulations to Jerry, Lynn, and, uh, Mr. Hester, Hester Padora. I'll just give you a job. Good job.
I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so on Thursday also, uh, the board will, well, um, the item F, the board will consider a motion for the reappointment of Mike Yancho, John Horcha, and Jay Johnson to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, uh, August first, twenty twenty through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And, uh, yes, uh, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would, I would like to see that those names split up and we discuss each individual's roles separately and we'll vote on them separately.
Okay. They actually, uh, are, uh, they all have the same role. They're all on the planning commission. So they...
But I'd like to, I'd like to vote on them separately.
Okay.
This is all.
I don't see any problem doing that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the next item, uh, that the board will consider, um, actually, uh, I think we probably can remove this from Thursday's agenda. Um, Ms. Lane had asked me if I, or I'm sorry. I know one of the things that, that we're excited about is that the Iron Bell Trail actually comes through Grand Blank Township. Um, the county is getting ready to, uh, uh, build a portion of it in the township. And they needed the, uh, the resolution and, uh, we were looking for a copy. Uh, Ms. Lane found the copy that, uh, we sent to the county. And so, uh, I think we were all set on that, I believe, uh. Um, so we're good with that, that we just couldn't locate it at the time. Item H, uh, the board, uh, will consider a motion. We're, I'm sorry, Mr. Massey?
Are you saying this comes off the agenda for Thursday?
Yes, we found the, the, uh, resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Al Mark.
Yep, we found the resolution, so the county has what they need now. Can you mute that if you would? Okay. Um, item H, uh, the board will consider a motion to consider a resolution approving a charitable gaming license for the Pink Party of Warwick Hills. Uh, you received the five oh one C three status as well as a description of the event. It's a fundraising event. And, Mr. Laddie, those are the two documents that we require in order to, uh, move this forward?
Well, that is, that's correct. We, uh, again, as a, as a part of the process for the the Michigan Lottery Commission, we have to adopt the resolution to allow any temporary charitable, uh, events. This, uh, is one of them and we, I did see the five oh one C three information. I, I think I know what the, what the event is and when it is, but, uh, I didn't see that document. But if you, if you can refresh the board's memory.
Okay. I'll make sure, I'll make sure by Thursday they have it. Maybe see Mr. Guzak's hand raised. Mr. Guzak?
Yeah, if you could just send that out to us, cause I didn't see that either.
Okay.
Either it's not in my pack. If he likes to know what it is and how long it lasts and that.
Maybe it was left out, but, uh...
Yeah, no problem. We got a couple days.
It's a fundraising event at Warwick, basically. Okay, um, anything else on that item? Okay, um, and we will discuss on Thursday. I'll, I'll make sure that, uh, we talk to, uh, our labor attorney with regard to, uh, getting an update on the police contracts as well as, uh, discussing the complaint that was filed from, uh, our, uh, from Mr. Limata. Um, I'm trying to make arrangements for us to be able to do a combination meeting so that if people want to attend the meeting as well as do it online, that we'll have the capability of doing that. Right now, uh, we either have to do it all online or all in person. But I am aware of, uh, a number of entities, including, I believe, the nine-one-one consortium here locally that, uh, is doing both, that if somebody wants to show up um, and be in attendance or do it online, uh, you'll have that option. I'm not sure, you know, that, I think right now we can have online meetings through the end of July. So, um, we'll see if that gets extended or not. Okay? Um, so otherwise, I'm not sure anybody has any board reports as far as their committees go. Uh, Ms. Lane? I'm sorry, Mr. Massey?
I have a question.
Sure.
How do we discuss, how will we, how will we be discussing the police contract online? When we have always have had executive session of our conversation and, uh, the police and all contracts? So what's so different about these new contracts that you, uh, uh, are proposing or looking into?
Well, what I was going to propose is that, uh, I will talk to, uh, to Aaron Graves, who's been involved in the negotiations. And, uh, I will find out from him if there's some, uh, information that we can share. If you want to mute that line. Then we will, uh, uh, share that in public or we can go into executive session to share it if he feels that that's necessary. But, uh, we're real close on a couple of the agreements and, uh, we may be able to announce that, uh, we, we have an agreement. So I, I guess I would leave it to his discretion, um, if he feels it needs to be an executive session and, um, we can do that. Otherwise, uh, we'll leave it to his discretion to, uh, do it in public. So either way, I'll have it on the agenda to discuss. Okay? So I'll consult with, with him since he's been, um, helping with those negotiations. Yes, Mr. Massey?
I'd like to say this. As a board member, let's put it on the table now. We have never had him leading a discussion for the board. That's what you have alluded to. That's what you alluded to. You just said it. I will see what he has to say. He has never had a discussion in, in the board's discussion.
Okay.
My knowledge.
Well, actually, he has, and, uh, he joined us in executive session a couple of times, uh, to discuss the contract with the police. Um, so, uh, yes, he has, actually, uh, he has been to our meetings. Yes.
I'll say this. Let me say this since you said that. I don't remember that many times that we have met talking about the police contract.
Well, we're going to talk about it on Thursday. So I'm not here to count how many times we've had a discussion or not had a discussion. But the bottom line is that Mr. Graves has been involved in negotiations and I am going to ask him to... and I am going to ask him to give a report. Whether he wants to make that report in public or whether he wants to make that in an executive session, I will leave that to his discretion. And if you choose to overrule that, um, and have it public or have it private, then that'll be the board's decision. But I am going to consult with him and we will see what he has to say. With that, um, there, I don't see it. Mr. Lane, Ms. Lane?
Mr. Chair, I would like the public to know that this afternoon, Amterra Supervisor called and because the temperature is to get up to a hundred degrees for the safety of their employees, they will be starting throughout the township at six fifteen AM instead of seven AM tomorrow for the safety of their employees to get their work done in as a reasonable a time as they can. So if there's any way anybody can think of to notify the public and let them know about it, I know we put it on the website, hopefully we'll put it on Facebook. But again, for the safety of their employees, they are starting early tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Okay, with that, uh, um, we'll get through some board reports on Thursday if anybody has any with regard to planning or the elections, what have you. But our next meeting is going to be Thursday at seven PM. And like I said, I'm going to attempt to see if, um, we can do it both in person and online. But, uh, it's, you know, the technology, uh, we're, we're still trying to figure it out. And by the time we probably figure it out completely, uh, we'll be back meeting in person. But we'll, we'll make our best attempt at it. So with that, Mr. Mansour?
Yes, I, I know we're already in the meeting here, but with respect to the written reports, the departmental reports.
Yes.
In the finance, in the finance report, I see that the same budgeting process that we've used the last couple of years has basically been, um, you know, is being, you know, reused here. And that's an area that I, uh, am not particularly comfortable with because it hasn't really allowed us to get some options in there. So I just wanted to make, make that point that I did read it. Um, I do see it's the same as before. And I will, I guess, make a couple of suggestions about how, maybe some modifications to that that we could consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be fine. We can look at those. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Lane? Uh, go ahead, Ms. Lane. We couldn't hear you.
I will, that we adjourn the meeting.
Back in.
Okay, supported by Mr. Massey. Go ahead, Ms. Lane.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Myself, yes, uh, and yourself, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, good night.